All right, it is 6:34. I am, and before I call the meeting to order again, if you have any desire to speak tonight at the public hearing, please make sure that you fill out the form before we get the meeting started. So if anybody's working on it now, and City Secretary, raise your hand so they know who to turn the forms into. If you're working on it and she's got it in a minute, I absolutely will take it. 6:34, I'm calling this meeting to order. And the first item for individual consideration, we will be holding a public hearing and consider action to approve the second reading of the Emergency Ordinance Number 2018-1-A of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, extending the temporary moratorium, Emergency Ordinance Number 2018-1 enacted August 23rd, 2018, including a severability clause and establishing an effective date. City Manager, I don't know if you have additional things that you want to present tonight. We had our first reading on this ordinance on Tuesday night, and I didn't know if you or the city attorney had any additional words for us.
I'm just going to repeat what we said for public record, but if y'all are good with that, I am happy to...
No, please go ahead.
Okay. The Emergency Ordinance 2018-1 that established the temporary moratorium was approved on August 23rd. It was for a period of 90 days, and that 90 days expires on the 21st of November. And at last council meeting, you approved the first reading of an ordinance that would extend the moratorium six months. We are pleased at the success because, as we all know, moratorium is the word the state law requires you to use, but we have not implemented a moratorium in the strictest of definition. A moratorium implies that no development is allowed. What council said is their value statement for this moratorium is we are not going to allow detrimental development. And so a process was created on a temporary basis that allows development to continue in the city of Bastrop that requires projects to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis through a pre-application meeting and conformity to specific interim drainage measures to ensure that detrimental development does not occur. And from the inception of the process through October 31st, there has been 41 individual pre-application meetings. 212 permits have been issued, including 17 new single-family residential, five commercial remodels, one office complex, two commercial finish outs, and probably the most significant item that occurred was a prevention of sorts, which was exactly what y'all were striving to do, and that is there was a development in one of our subdivisions that was planning to be built in a drainage area. And because of the pre-application processes and the engineering work that is required, they determined that they needed to move it out of the drainage area and save what would have been several hundred thousand dollar investment and really signing up for a lifetime of misery they weren't aware they were probably even getting. So by extending this six months, it's going to allow us to address our drainage regulations. One of the things that we've talked about is the Atlas 14 data that we know was made available at the end of October. Staff is working with our engineering groups to determine what that actually means and looks like. We have contracted with Hafn Associates to do a 2D model of the Gills Branch watershed specifically across 95 of the hill, so we can get some additional data that will help fill in some of the gaps on information that we need. And with that, we'll be rewriting drainage standards. The Atlas 14 data, I don't know what it means for Bastrop, but I do know how the city of Austin is choosing to explain what Atlas 14 does for them. They believe that their 500-year flow plane will become the 100-year flow plane, and their 100-year flow plane will become their 25-year flow plane. For people at home that are not familiar with Atlas 14, the National Weather Service has come into our area and recalculated what is now the average rainfall that one can expect, and it's two and a half inches more than it used to be. And in a drainage system, that's significant. So we have to determine what that looks like. So this six-month extension will allow us to get through our development code process, and the development codes are intended to preserve authentic Bastrop and ensure that we are progressive in our future as long as they're physically responsible, geographically sensitive, and not detrimental to the neighbors. So that's the essence of the policy that y'all have established, the work that's been done, and this allows us an additional six months to complete that work, which has been y'all's commitment, and that is to take the appropriate time to get it right. And as we mentioned Tuesday night, if all of this occurs sooner than the six-month extension, which would be November, or I'm sorry, May 21st, then y'all would repeal this ordinance sooner rather than later. With that, Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, City Manager. Council, do you have any comments before I open the public hearing? So I am officially opening the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up to speak? So there, I'm officially closing the public hearing. Since there is no one signed up to speak, and Council, we can have a discussion after someone makes a motion, and we have a second.
Madam Mayor, move to approve. Second.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protim Nelson. I have a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion before we take a vote?
I think we've discussed this. I think this is a continuation of our commitment to do what's right, and I would encourage us to certainly move forward with this. Again, I'm encouraged by the fact that if we achieve what we've set out to do, that we can shorten the so-called moratorium, but if not, we'll just continue it all the way through until May.
I would like to make the comment, these individual pre-application meetings, for clarification, City Manager, it's my understanding those meetings take place on Tuesdays, and we are doing our best. I don't think anyone's waited more than two weeks. So we've been filling those slots, and staff has made themselves available so that we can work through any of the issues so projects can continue.
Yes, yes. Am I on? There we go. So much so that if they can get through a process on a Tuesday, it shows up on the agenda Tuesday evening if you happen to be having a council meeting. So to the extent we can and are able to expedite the service through this process, they've done a nice job.
And just a reminder for the public, just this past Tuesday, Council, you may recall that we approved four exemptions. So we have an exception process that staff can approve, but based on definitions of the ordinance, if staff is not able to approve that, it comes to council, and we are considering those except exemptions at every one of our meetings. So any other discussion or comments? Madam Secretary, if you'll please call in a vote. Your Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Wal?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeas and one absence. It's kind of neat for the plan. Four yeas and one absence, so the motion passes and the court's going with the same date, 21st, 2019, or as soon as we are done with everything, if that is earlier, I have confidence this committee will, this committee will complete this. With that, we are moving on to the worksheet portion. We are on item 3A, received presentation and full discussion with NewGen Strategies and Solutions regarding the city's water and wastewater rate ordinance and established rates. City Manager.
Mayor and Council, I am very pleased to be able to introduce to you Chris Eckert with NewGen Strategies. You might recall that we commented back and forth in the summertime that we were in the process of building a water and wastewater rate model. And the reason that that's important for us is we all appreciate and recognize that with the water and wastewater projects that we have in our future, that modeling our rates becomes phenomenally important, specifically at a 30%, 60%, 90% design review of our infrastructure, and we need to be able to anticipate and stay on top of what that might look like. So we hired NewGen and absolutely are pleased beyond with Chris. Chris has an unusual knowledge of not only understanding how to build a rate model, but he understands water and wastewater. He can recite to use the law almost verbatim, so he can make the practical application meet the technical application and then factor in the citizens as well, and that is an extraordinary gift, because ratemaking, while everybody would like for it to be a science, this is much an art as it is science. We can work the numbers all day long, but you have to factor in the socioeconomic aspect of your community. You have to figure out the political reality of where you are, and so the art piece of this is, in some instances, more important than the science. Part of what has been a challenge for us to this point in getting that model finished is what I like to refer to as, well, we're in Bastrop, and we do things a little different. And as Chris goes through the ordinance, you'll appreciate some of the differences because he met with us and said, "Before I can really finalize this, we've got to take care of some of the nuances and interesting elements of your ordinance." You're going to hear him use the word tonight "industry standard." There are some industry standards that the American Waterworks Association and the Wastewater Association consider as standards. TCUQ has some standards, and in some instances, we're not benchmarking against what should be an industry standard. So before we set rates, we need to get our house in order, make sure the foundation, if you will, of our ratemaking is in order. So Chris is going to be a really, really important partner to what's going forward. You're going to see Chris tonight, and we're going to deal with water and wastewater ratemaking this evening. Chris and our city attorney's office and staff are meeting through a telephone conversation tomorrow, and we're now going to embark on the wholesale water/wastewater piece of this because we now have a signed agreement with Aqua, and we need to get a standardized contract for both sides of our business that are tied to our permits, tied to Aqua, and it's complicated. It certainly can be resolved, but we need to be smart and think to the future. And so I'm so delighted that Chris is on our team because when we started reviewing the contract, he said, "Well, you know, we really need to think about this, this, and this." And I said, "No, what we really need to do is put our attorney on the telephone with our ratemaker and let them work all that out." So that's going to happen as well. Because we are growing and our water and wastewater rates will be changing often, you will also see Chris help us with our impact fees. The key to our impact fees being successful is that we not wait too long to change them when we know they need to be changed, because every development that gets built that's not paying its appropriate impact is being subsidized by somebody. That is in violation of your number-one principle of being physically sustainable. So Chris is going to help us with our impact model, and because our impact fees are tied to water/wastewater, it seems like a natural connection to let Chris just manage the entire system so that we are consistent in the application of the information that gets put in there. And I think after tonight, y'all will get to experience Chris and really appreciate that when you ask a question, he will give you a straight, rock-solid answer, and he'll teach you what you didn't know you needed to ask. And that's what I've been most appreciative of, of our relationship with Chris in the very short time that we've had. NewGen is a longstanding company, and I have history with who they have bought and incorporated when I used to do cable rates before the state managed to make franchising cable a state function and not a local function. So this company has some rock-solid history with ratemakers that I've known for a long time, so I'm very comfortable in the decision that will come from this and knowing that you'll be making policy decisions based on really good, solid thoughts that go into this. So we're not going to wake up one day and be surprised at the outcome. So with that introduction, I want to turn this over to Chris and let him walk you through this evening his presentation on water and wastewater.
That was quite an introduction, so hopefully I can live up to that. Again, Chris Eckert with NewGen Strategies, who is mayor and council, so it's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. Do I need to say seated for purposes of the camera and everything? Okay, I will do that then. So I come from a family of creatures, we stand, so forgive me. So tonight, again, our discussion topic is water and wastewater, and I don't use the word "discussion" lightly. I would much rather it be "discussion" rather than a presentation. Hopefully, I will answer all the questions you have. I would know exactly what questions you're going to have, and will answer them, will answer them, but that may not be the case. As we talked about, the topic of water and wastewater rates is really more art and science. There are a lot of nuances to this, so as we go through this, please don't forget to stop me any time you have a question, if I get going too fast, or there's some concept that I covered that you just don't quite understand, let's go back over that, because again, tonight, we are establishing that foundation. When you think about water and wastewater rates, what we're doing is we are sending a price signal to our customers. You are pricing each server, you are pricing a commodity, just as a department store is pricing their goods or just as the hairdresser is pricing their goods or services. We are doing the same thing, but with water and wastewater. But when we think about that, we are also not only are we sending a signal, but we're also setting a policy. And so that's why I'm here tonight to talk. You are the policy maker. As you sit here tonight, you are effectively the board of directors of a business, and that business is water and wastewater. And we have some business decisions to make tonight as we go through this. What we're going to do is we're going to start with water, we'll walk through water, then we'll walk through sewer, then at the end of the night, we're going to wrap up and talk about neighbors a little bit, and I'm going to throw in that into the box. We're going to talk about your neighbors and how you look compared to your neighbors and why that may or why that exists that way, and why you do look at it, but it's ten times younger. So we'll get to all that at the end of the presentation. There's one thing I want to emphasize to you tonight, because you're not doing anything tonight. So the water rates, as they exist right now, are not changing. That's why our first bullet here, we are maintaining existing rates for residential customers after the time. We are looking at changing the rate design, which will have an impact, but rates are not necessarily going up. So I do want to emphasize that, too. These next few bullets we're going to talk about here have some of the changes that I'm suggesting to you as the board of directors that you should look at. But the other element on this slide I want to point out is we're looking at changing this rate design affected January 1st of 2020, not January 1st, 2019, we're looking a whole year from now. We need to have time to build that foundation properly, make sure who understands, make sure the community understands what we're doing and why we're doing it. So you want to emphasize that as we look through. So some of the changes that we're suggesting in terms of rate design. Number one, when you look at your water rates, so a little education on water rates, for those of you that really haven't dug into your water bill, there are two components to the water rate. There's a fixed charge that is paid regardless of use, and then there's a volumetric charge that is varied based on the usage. You have what we call an inclining block rate, which means the rate goes up per unit the more you use. Let me demonstrate that right quick. So you can see that on the slide right now. You have six rate blocks. So if somebody uses 3,000 gallons, they pay per 1,000 gallons, they pay the $2.85. But when they go over 3,000 gallons, they get into another unit rate. So if you get up to 4,000 gallons, for that 3,000 to 4,000 gallons of block, you're going to pay $3.04 for that block. And this goes on and on and on, the more you use, the more you pay. It's different. It's per 1,000, per 1,000 gallons. Yes, yes, it's a per 1,000 gallon rate. And you go through these rate blocks. So say you use 5,000 gallons, you're going to pay $2.85 per 1,000 gallons of per unit for the first 3,000. Then the next 3,000 or two units, you'd be charged 3.00. So that's the way this inclining block works. The idea is we want to encourage conservation, we're trying to, as I said, to our customers to encourage conservation. Absolutely mean to them. But the flip side of that is if you're a customer, say you're new to the city, you come in, you get your bill, and you want to calculate your bill, you want to understand your bill, and you're getting this, and you start to try to figure this out, this becomes difficult, it becomes tedious and a bit overblown. At the same time, for your staff, when they're trying to potentially make a building adjustment or when they're trying to explain this to your citizens, it takes more time, it's difficult for them. So one of the things we're suggesting is to reduce the number of rate blocks, or the six, the four. We still want to encourage conservation, so we're still, we still have an inclining block rate. The unit rate is still going up, but it's more sensible, it's easier to understand. So I'm going to try to use if I'm back up. Perfect. So again, what are we doing? We're reducing the number of rates. That's our suggestion. Why do we use that? Reduce administrative burden, make it more accessible for customers to understand. So as you saw previously, what we've done is we've timed the current rate structure to a new rate structure, so we carry the $2.85 across. The 3.42 to 10 to 30, we pay at the 10 to 20,000 gallon rate, and then that top block, the 50,000 right now, $3.87, we just start charging that at 30,000. But what that does, and as you shift those rates around, it does reduce the dollars you will generate by about 32,000 dollars if we go with these rates. It's just to understand because of how customers use the system and where they fall, this could actually reduce revenue. Okay? Again, we're not setting rates tonight. We'll look at rates under this rate design as we go forward. Anytime I give you an estimated financial impact tonight, that's just to kind of give you an idea of relevant provisions. Those will change, those are not set in stone. All right? Because for impact, depending upon where you fall in this structure, your bill may actually decrease, or if you're a high user, if you're getting up to that 50,000 gallon rate, your bill's going to decrease, because we're adjusting to a rate that's how we're timing it. So that's our first suggestion to you as you look at your rate dynamics, is to reduce the number of blocks. You're going to see this on the wastewater side as well when you get over there, so kind of keep that in mind, not only a water topic, this is all a little part.
Chris, you might visit about the percentage of users that are actually going to be impacted at that 30,000 gallon level.
As I recall, and you may have to correct me because I don't have a chart, it's 2%. We actually ran out, I wish we'd put this chart on the presentation, I apologize for that. Where we actually go in, look at the number of customers 5,000 gallons in, and you have very few customers getting up through that top block. But the next time I'm back, we'll all make sure we have that chart so you can see that. So the second change we're suggesting we make is on the fixed charge. Earlier, we talked about the fixed charge versus the volumetric charge. This change will be on the fixed charge side. So right now, I'm going to point to the current rate column. I know there's a lot of numbers on the slide, I apologize for that, and we're going to walk through all of it. So under the current rate column, you can see the larger the meter, the more you pay. We like, this is an industry standard, as we talked about earlier. When you think about the size of a meter, when you open that meter up all the way, we call that the instantaneous demand. The bigger the meter, the more instantaneous demand you can place on the system. So it naturally follows that that goes and drives the investment in resources. Larger meters, we've got to have bigger pipes, we've got to have bigger pumps. We have to stand ready, we call this readiness to serve. We have to stand ready to meet the instantaneous demand that needs. So what you're doing here is great, but it's our opinion that it's not quite enough. I'm going to talk about that in a little bit. When you look at meter sizes and you look at those instantaneous demand numbers, the American Waterworks Association tells us basically for each size meter, what that is equivalent to, we call it meter equivalency, what that is equivalent to the three-quarter inch meter. So I'm going to pick on our two-inch meter section. The AWA tells us, based on instantaneous demand, a two-inch meter is equivalent to over five three-quarter inch meters. So ultimately, the two-inch meter, that charge should be five times what the three-quarter inch is. That's not the case. Right now, when your charge is, you are charging a two-inch meter less than three times the one, the three-quarter inch. So what we've done, if you look all the way to the chart column between 2024, we come in and use the standard AWA equivalent. This is what this should look like, based on the size of the meter. So a six-inch meter, of which you only have two within the entire city, instead of paying 6.61 CBA, they should be paying in that fixed charge, 9.39. So what we're suggesting, you go through a process of slowly saving this in. First off, let's back up, three-quarter inch, twenty inch meters, those are going to be your residential customers. That is about nine, over 95% of your customers. We are not impacting a lot of customers through this change. As you look at the one and a half inch, that's 73 customers, two inches, we've got 97 of those in the system right now, and again, earlier, we said six inches, we've only got two six-inch meters in the system. But why would we base this in? Those larger meters are typically used for the customers, can be researches, could be nursing homes, could be schools. So we need to be cognizant that as we go through this change, that we prepare our customers for this change, they understand this change, and we give them time to adapt to that change. What we've done is we've set what they should be in 2024. We've looked at the difference in 2024 to 2020, and we've divided it equally. You can see our example down there. For the six-inch meter, we just escalated it to 52.46 every year. So again, we can get there, but we need to slowly over time to give our customers time to adjust. All right? It's there.
So do you think that just initially from half of these rate steps, that they were just set maybe randomly without consultation, without maybe people in the town that are always rating off? You know, how, why is it that they're so off in some areas?
You know, I can't speak to why the rates are set this way, but again, earlier, we talked about the rate design is more art than science. What I'm giving you here in 2024, the second one, it's quite possible that at prior time, council decided, "We simply can't do that." Or it could be that these rates have been around this way for a while, and the change is not needed. There's, we don't, we simply don't know why they just set this way, but based on what we need today, how systems are operated today, this will work.
So maybe, it's probably just more of something we just needed to update.
Quite possible.
Probably, just like everything that we've come across, since we've started this whole process, we're finding that we need coordination in our business.
You've been here five years since, and this process was the first time that Tracy's been exposed to this type of information and made the decisions, so we don't have the historical information to pose that question, so we're moving forward on what we ought to be doing.
My question is, when's the last time we changed the rate on the meter?
You've changed the rate, you cannot put it forward between what you've done, you haven't been able to take like, how do we apply this?
So that current rates column, you may have said, "We're taking everything up 3%" or something like that.
That's right.
Right? Nobody said, "How's this work out?"
I've seen that in the past, but we've never actually gone back to it one, and we've said, "Is what we're doing, does it make sense?" We have used rate improvements in the past, we've had several different ones, so...
Okay, but regardless of what the methodology was, when's the last time there was an increase on new, on these rates?
Yeah, I think it's been years.
So three years, about?
It was December of 2012.
Okay. I'd be here with you. It goes quickly, it goes quickly.
One thing that is not necessarily a recommendation tonight, but just in general, when you're thinking about rate design... One, one thing that is not necessarily a recommendation in my, but just in general, when you're thinking about rate adjustments, I recommend to my clients that you try and make a rate adjustment either every year or every other year, and make them small. Do small incremental adjustments more often. That's easier for customers to build into their budget, for them to absorb into their monthly budget, their, their expenditure. Uh, they're just like you, they have a budget, or they should have a budget. They need to accommodate. So small incremental changes more often is what I'd recommend. Again, that's kind of off-topic here. Any other questions about the, uh, the meter size charging? One thing, basically, yes.
So you're, it's going to take you until twenty fourteen to do, excuse me, twenty twenty-four to do this incremental rate increase. So by twenty fourteen, has the standard changed? So for example, how often do you go in and adjust your fees, your standard fee?
As far as the equivalency reason, or as far as?
Do you understand what I'm asking my name is?
Once you get a standard fixed, how often is it likely to change?
That is not likely to change often. This is going to be equivalency that I need to hear, not change from six inches. So once, they're not due to changes that I know of, um, the only thing that will change it will honestly be, to my knowledge, ultimately die of me, but I don't anticipate that coming. Again, this has been, this has been standard as long as I've been in the industry here. I don't anticipate it. Now, one thing, we, we phased this in over a number of years. So if the council choose, we can't phase this in fast. This is hard, this is not science, this is up you, this is a policy scientist. So while we're suggesting we kind of take this slow, if you choose to take it faster, we certainly do. All right? So again, backing up one slide, just the, the S, oh, get there.
One of the things that would be helpful, if, if as he makes a recommendation, it strikes you not correctly, let's talk about it now. Um, so that when we bring you the ordinance, um, we, we have addressed the concerns and can note in the ordinance why we're, um, deviating from perhaps industry standards. Because part of the challenge that you will find as we go through this, is you've asked a question, we can't answer. We've already asked the question. And there isn't a rhyme or reason. So part of what we need to do is to capture that history for our future. So that, that if the environment changes, or the reason for the decision changes, then somebody can go back to that point and be able to say, conditions have changed, and now's the time to, to make, uh, some kind of, of modification. So if those are things that are, um, something that you find odd, let's chat as a policy, so we can document that in the document that we bring you. Because if not, then we'll just go with industry standard.
I have two points on it. One is, I was really asking that from the queen of you, just to reiterate just what we've kind of been finding throughout this whole process, which is that we just need to update stuff. So I wasn't really trying to embarrass or call anybody out on any of much of the other thing, but it's a good thing when you're doing this. Just, you know, it's really good. So, I mean, of course, if you want to do the history, that's fine, but that wasn't what I was trying to, towards, um, at, at all. And the other thing, I personally, and I would like to know what y'all think about this, because I think it's really important that we be able to pay for what we do. And we haven't really been paying, you know, there's certain things that we've had to update, that what we were charging wasn't covering the cost. I personally would like to see this in two million a year, in a three-year plan versus a five-year plan. And we have so many expenses coming up, and all of this is in, and I just don't think we should play around with them. And I understand that people have budgets, but I also think it's really important for us to pay for what we're doing. And myself, one of the main reasons I ran into councils, because I really wanted to put fast-off in orders when I did. And so I think one way to do that is to pay for what we do. So that's just, you know, that's what I think, and I understand, you know, that you're looking at a five-year graduation, that I personally would like to see it in two million a year.
Uh, my comment on that, um, and obviously, because we jump in, is I think that's a hard thing to answer until we see the totality of the impact. Because, um, incremental change is, is fine, and, and I, you know, you're recommending that small incremental changes more often is better than big changes. But I just want to be sensitive to the fact that we have talked about adding a drainage utility, which no one has ever paid before. We just raised wastewater rates by ten dollars a month. I, I, at some point, I need to have a totality, and, um, I guess, honestly, as the city manager, this may be, you know, we'll tell you now, from my perspective, a question that I would ask, so you're not surprised at the end. I would like to know, given the water and wastewater rates, given all of that, if I am a standard house, and I know we don't have that, but what, draw some sort of a average house value, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the impact of all of these changes is X amount of dollars to, because we, you know, the classic, we didn't change the rate, but their appraisals have gone up, so their property taxes are going up. It, it's a long list, and five dollars here and ten dollars here becomes an awful lot of money if it's all going to come at one time. So I don't know if the magic number is three, five, six, but, but we, and I know, and I don't want to have like every smorgasbord answer. You know, I know there's only so many scenarios we can run, but it makes me very nervous when we do things not in a holistic manner.
And I appreciate that, and we're going to end up with a chicken in the net conversation. Because I can't give you rates if you don't tell me what your ordinance is. Hence why we're here having a policy conversation. And the drainage fee is, I think, we can talk about it from a perspective of a maintenance fee, which is all it would be today, but we're probably a year and a half to two years out before we can discuss regional retention flood mitigation. So I, I, I appreciate the question, and I'm extremely sensitive from a policy standpoint, but at some point in time, we're going to have to make some decisions. And so my, my comment to you would be to err on the side of caution, um, and be conservative until we have information that proves that we need to be more, um, um, uh, aggressive than cautious.
So just clarity for myself, I believe that's why you're saying, like, if, if we were to say five years, that doesn't mean that we can't change things between now and five years. If there's additional data, and it's like, okay, given this information, we've got to pull something. We still have the opportunity, because we are still setting and improving the rates every year.
Yes, ma'am. And, and the expectation that we will set for you is you will be adjusting water and wastewater rates every year. Uh, and that will be driven by the, um, capital improvement projects that we'll be doing over the course of the next four years, which we talked about at that March meeting. Um, part, part of the reason for the model is, we know that K S A is already designing a wastewater treatment plant. So they're going to give us thirty percent numbers at thirty percent design, and then they're going to come back at sixty percent design. And hopefully, there's not much change, but we've seen since March, a twenty-five percent, uh, tariff on steel. So in that short period of time, things happen. Those would be the kinds of things that would cause you, as a policymaker, to go, whoa-ho! We didn't have that information when we did this last year, and now because of the X, we must do Y. And so, yes, y'all set policy, you set rates every year. Um, and part of what tonight's conversation is going to do is to allow us to have a conversation about water and wastewater rates in April, so that y'all can begin to tell us what direction you'd like, and we've got time then to educate our customers, which we didn't last time, because we didn't have the information, we just knew we needed more than what we had. So we're trying to get a cycle, this foundation, if you will, so that Chris can complete that model. And then we have the foundation, so that when we bring you, um, the information that we have, that we know today, um, this foundation works. And as things change, then you will be able to make good inform, good decisions, because we'll have a model, and we can run a three-year scenario, a five-year scenario, a seven-year scenario. But we can't do that today until we know what elements have to go in the model. So that, hence the chicken in the egg.
Thank you. So council, given that, Councilmember Jones has ma, has expressed that her opinion would be to go to three years. The, um, what we see on the chart is five years, so I would appreciate if each of you would chime in with your opinion.
I'd like to.
Yeah.
I'd like it. Uh, I understand where Councilwoman Jones is going, but if y'all will remember, last March it was, I think, when we first talked about this, maybe it was February, I said I, and we went around the room, and said, are you on board? And I said, my concern is, is what is the totality of the impact that we're talking about, much, very much to what you said, you know? And I would prefer for us to go slow first, and start trying to develop that totality, totality, if that's a word. And then if we need to bump it up sooner, bump it up sooner. But, uh, we're.
So I'm taking that comment as five, five years. Is that, Councilmember Rogers?
I'm kind of going with what Bill is saying, what you're saying, it's really hard to, to say yes to you on this one piece of pie, because there are several fees that are going up between water and wastewater, so I would like to stay at the five until we see the whole picture, and then decide later, after we see how this pie is, how much you want to eat today.
Mayor Proton Nelson?
Well, I, I, I think it's, it's very interesting, we're going through to establish a, a clear methodical process to determine what that cost should be, rather than be just arbitrary percentages across the board. Uh, I'd like to see everything, again, that, that totality, which is a word. The, uh, but in totality, rather than just arbitrarily just throwing something out there, I want to see what the impact is to, to our citizens as a whole. I think we're just beginning this conversation, so I think there's a lot more conversation we need to have, where I'm willing to make a comment that either three, five, six, seven, twelve years.
Uh, okay, but that's, that's not one of the choices, because they're needing to know a number so they can work on the ordinance. So I'm, I need you to pick a number.
I would, I would prefer to see it spaced out over a number of years, rather than, than, than throw it at our citizens all in a short period of time. However, I want to ensure that we have the resources to meet the need. If we don't have the resources to meet the need, we'd have to reconsider. But I'd rather see it over the, the five-year or six-year period as opposed to a three-year period.
Councilmember Jones?
So, you know, you're talking about totality, and I think that the managers' base was clear that we're not going to know what that total number is. We're going to know incrementally what that number is. So we might know about water rate beginning of the year.
Let, but let me offer this, this comment, and Chris can correct me if I'm wrong. The fixed costs typically cover your debt. The volume covers your maintenance, your capital, and anything else. So we're talking fifty-two dollars a year on two meters. A hundred dollars is not going to help us or hurt us with the sixty-two million dollar capital improvement plan we got coming at us. So this is not where I would, um, get hung up on. Where you're going to be faced with the challenge is the volumetric rate. And that's where you're going to most impact, um, your citizens. Because when you look at this charge, ninety-one percent of your customers are your residential customers, and that rate's not changing at all. The argument could be made with the two, uh, six-inch meters, if fifty-two dollars is going to make or break you, you're probably in the wrong business. And so the fixed costs need to be established based on the debt associated with, um, the water system. And today, they're adequate. What we're hoping for is the efficiency with our new wa, uh, new water treatment plant, because the current two systems we have are very expensive with filters, that we will be able to shift some of the volumetric cost to the debt, and it's a net sum gain. If steel prices will cooperate with us, we stand a shot at making that happen. The beauty of this is, is that we have a multiple-year time span with time to change, to take a look at it. And so the, the real challenging conversation is going to come in April. And I'm afraid it's going to be a slight shock and awe, because the twenty-five percent tariff will be plugged in there, because that's all we know. But we have reason to believe and hope that once the steel plants in this country come up and can produce steel, that steel prices will go down. And the hope is, is by the time we need steel for the plant, they've gone down. But we will give you the information we have, based on the information that we have. That's the only prudent thing we can do. And so today, what you're doing is establishing the policy, so that he can go complete the model, so we can come back in April with K S A and freezing nickel's preliminary numbers put in there, and y'all can then have the policy conversations about, here's what it's really going to cost. That tier, that tier, and that tier. Have I represented this journey, Bridgette?
So bottom line, in April, we could, we could revisit this.
Oh, yes.
As he said, these are not going into effect until January twenty twenty. But it's a starting point, because we can't give you a rate model until you give us the basis on which to calculate the rates.
Depending on what we get at the price, I may be on. Jones has said that we need to speed this thing up a little bit.
That, that's right.
Oh, I understand, okay.
Just keep in mind, to her point, ninety-five percent of the meters aren't going to, aren't going to change. So this, if there, if we see a need to speed something up, this is not likely the place that's going to do anybody any good. So we're, we're, that's, that's the point. Have you got what you need to?
Yes, ma'am, I'm great, she.
Thank you.
All right. So the next change we're going to talk about, the next two changes, impact your multifamily housing. So if you have an apartment building, or any kind of multifamily housing. So when we got into your ordinance right now, you actually build your multifamily housing different from water and sewer. So let's start talking about water. The way you build multifamily housing right now on water, is you build it based on the size of the meter to each building. So let's say we have a building with eight units, and it's got a two-inch meter. You build it, you build that entire building a two-inch meter, and then depending upon how the, uh, multifamily housing chooses to recover their cost, that's up to them. But that's how that's done on the water side. On the wastewater side, you look at each unit, and say, there are eight units there, so there should be eight fixed charges applied to that building. There's two very different ways to do it. What we are recommending to you is that the way it should be done is you should charge each unit a fixed charge on the water side as well, just like you do on the wastewater side. Why is that? When you go in and look at the T P Q rules, Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, they, they are the state agency that tells you the size, the size of the pumps you need, the size of the, uh, storage you need, and they do all of that based on the number of connections. And when you dig into statutes and look at how they define a connection, they specifically call out and say, a connection includes each unit in a multifamily housing or in an apartment complex. They use that as an example in the law. They see that, they say that each unit is a connection. So when they are assessing your system, they are looking at eight connections, not one building. And so our recommendation to you is to change how you charge your multifamily customers, that each unit should be billed the same fixed charge as a single-family home. That three-quarter inch meter size that we saw earlier, each unit should be charged that fixed charge. Any questions on that? Does that make sense?
So if you do that, then do you still maintain one cost for the volumetric? So you just bill over that for one?
Very good question, because that's the next slide, in fact. So on the volumetric side, what we would do there, we have the tiers that we talked about earlier. You cannot go and run that whole building through, through each, through the tiers. So what we're recommending is that you multiply each tier by the number of units. So in that first block, let's, let's take our example of our eight units per building. That first block would be eight times ten thousand, there would be eighty thousand gallons in that first block, reflective of those eight different units. So there's a change both on the fixed size and the volumetric side. So that's how that would have to work, okay? It's, we, we try to use logic when we can, so I'm glad to hear that that's logical. So, but again, this also mirrors what you're doing already on the wastewater side. So we are bringing consistency amongst all the charges. At the same time, we are reflecting how you incur cost on your system because the TQ is looking at connections. And so we should price things by connection. We, we should follow that. All right? Any questions on those two changes specific to multifamily? Okay? Okay. So, so, okay, so, so backing up right quick, earlier, we had our three tiers, zero to 10, 10 to 30, and 30 and above. And so if you were a single-family home and you used 12,000 gallons, 10,000 would fall in the first tier, 2,000 would fall in the second tier. But now we're back to our multifamily housing. We've got one master meter to the building. That building may be using 100,000 gallons. We can't take that 100,000 gallons and put 10,000 in the first tier, 20,000 in the second, and the rest in the third tier because we're looking at it on a per-unit basis. So we need to adjust our volumetric charges to reflect eight connections in that building. And so in order to do that, for that first tier, we would take our eight connections or our eight units multiplied by that first tier. So instead of only 10,000 gallons, okay, okay. Where did I, no, this, are you sure? Okay, yes, sir.
But, but I'm going to stop and say, if you're not getting it, people at home aren't. So you're not the only people we're striving to educate. The, the issue is, I think, if I can say this a different way, if we're using 100,000 gallons and there's eight units?
Yes, ma'am.
Then you're going to divide that 100,000 by eight.
Yes.
And each one of them is going to fall under the 10,000, zero to 10,000 category. And then each unit is going to flip over to the 10,000 to the 30,000 for two additional 1,000 gallons. Does that make sense?
All right, very good. We are hiring right now if you're interested in that. So again, just, all of the changes on multifamily, we summarized here. This will produce additional revenue because we are changing from the meter size by building to the individual connection. So just that in itself will, will result in more revenue. So outside-city customer rates, you have some customers that are...
Time, timeout. I, I want to go back and talk about that results in additional revenue. Those will be passed through things that will be in monthly rentals in less, um, in the apartments. So that will just be absorbed into the rent that is published, not necessarily somebody on a fixed income. There are people that live in an apartment in a fixed income, but the relationship is different when you bring in than when you own your home. So I want to translate how that will manifest itself to the end user. It's a pass-through cost that will show up in the lease that you sign in the renewal.
All right, so outside-city customers, and I'm going to flip forward one slide. Every blue dot you see here is a customer that is on your system, but they are outside your system. So you are providing service to customers that lie outside your system. A standard industry practice, and this is recognized in, uh, CUC rules, is that you can charge outside-city customers a multiplier. They are not, they are not shareholders on your system. They are customers. Your residents, your ratepayers are shareholders. They built this system, they've invested in the system. You don't have to set a relationship with these customers. And so it is difficult for an outside-city customer to charge more. In fact, you do charge these customers more rates. On the fixed charge, you, you charge them 1.5 times, but on the volumetric side, it varies. You charge them sometimes 1.45 more and sometimes 1.46 more. So it's inconsistent. Don't know why, it, it's just, it's just how it's been. So what we're recommending is that you come in and you standardize this practice, that you take the inside-city rate, you multiply it by 1.5, and that becomes the rate for the outside-city customer. As the inside-city customers change, the outside-city customer changes. But we have logic to it, and it's a standard process. So that's what we're recommending for your outside-city customers. Again, very small impact, uh, but again, it's, it's the idea of creating that logic, creating that measure. Simple. Unlike what we did for multifamily. Any, any questions on that? And that, that gets us through our water changes. Before I go to sewer, I want to make sure, are there any other questions on any of the water changes? Okay? So the volumetric changes, all we would change on the volume side would be these tiers, where we would go from the six down to the nine.
No, I, I have thought of it.
Okay? Anything else on water when you're on? All right? So we're going to start on the sewer side. Again, same slide, we're maintaining the rates, we're looking January 2020 when we're looking for these changes, keeping that consistent. Just as we did on the water side, we're recommending to reduce the number of rate blocks on the sewer side. So right now, you have five sewer rate blocks. We're recommending you take that to three, trying to mirror what we're doing on the water side, keeping consistency, keeping logic in the process. Now, on commercial, we're going to break this up and talk about commercial sewer, and then we're going to talk about residential sewer. So on your commercial customers right now, your commercial customers pay for sewers just like residency based on a winter average, and they run through the rate queue. So let's talk about winter averaging because we're going to, that kind of wraps up in this discussion. There's typically two ways to charge for sewer sewers, okay? We don't bill what goes into the sewer. We don't have a meter for what goes in the sewer. It's too expensive and it's unreliable. We simply just can't do that. So what we do is to try and establish a surrogate for what is going into the sewer system. We go and we look at a winter average, often called winter quarter averaging, where you go and you look at the water use during the winter. You average that, and that is assumed to be what that household is returning back into the sewer system. The idea is that in the summer, when you're watering your yard, there's water that's going on the yard that's not going into the sewer system. You shouldn't be billed for that. That's why we do winter quarter averaging or winter averaging, if you'll hear me refer to it. What's different, however, is for our commercial customers. Commercial customers are different. They typically, they, they don't water because they may not have an irrigation system. If they do and they water a lot, they typically have their irrigation system on a separate meter. So when we think about billing commercial customers, it's done differently than how we build residential customers. At the same time, our commercial customers, it's very rare to see, uh, tiers on the sewer side. We're not recommending you change from this structure right now because it would have a significant rate impact. So we're not, we're not recommending moving away from the tiers, but long-term, you probably want to move away from it because this is not a typical sewer rate structure. A more typical sewer rate structure is a flat rate. And so what we're recommending for your commercial customers, one, is that you take...
Can I ask you, that, does more typical rate structure is a flat rate for commercial or for residential or for both?
For both. It's actual for both. Now, we have seen inclining, or we've seen this on, on residential sewer, but when you think about sewer, you're not trying to encourage conservation of sewage. The reason we do an inclining block on the water side, we're trying to conserve water. We're not sending that same price signal here because you don't have people running to put sewage into the wastewater system. That's, that's not a concern of trying to conserve sewage as it were. You, you, you want it to be in there and you want it gone. Now, we do have the Texas Water Conservation Implementation Task Force, that's the only time I'm going to say that tonight. They have a guide called the Best Management Practices Guide for Water Conservation. And one of the things they have in that guide is if you really want to encourage water conservation, then they say do this on the sewer side. Because they feel it encourages both water conservation on both ends of the bill, both on water and sewer. So what you're doing, while it's unusual, it's not a burden. And so from that standpoint, I'm not recommending the change to your residential building.
So we're talking about changing several things in our development code, and we're looking at all sorts of things. So right away, what's going in my mind is, it might be nice if people went to low-flow toilets. And if you have a flat rate, then somebody says, why would I do that? It's not saving me anything anyway. But if I do go to that and there is a benefit from it, so that, in my mind, that's a, okay, well, if there, have three blocks, not five. Have them make sense, but before you do away with them, maybe there's, it, it may be in it. Because there's no point in doing away with them and then have them back because we find out that there can be some conservation for it.
No, absolutely. And that's the thing about rate design. Rate design is about goals and objectives. That's why we come back to the part discussion. It really needs to mirror the policy. What are your policy objectives with the council?
One of the things that I don't think I've heard, and I will say this for the benefit of people at home. The reason water systems do a winter average is because typically we irrigate in the summertime. And so in order to calculate what your sewer charge is, the way to create a sewer charge is to back out your irrigation. Now, in other parts of the state, if you probably live above Waco, winter averaging makes sense. But I water my yard here about 11 out of 12 months. So I, I'm not sure how much winter averaging helps us, but winter averaging for the water side was designed to factor out irrigation when establishing sewer rates for the rest of the year. And so typically, cities will take a December, January, February, and March and kick out the highest of the four so that you have a three-month average as your winter average on sewer the rest of the year. But it's driven by irrigation, and I don't know that you commented enough on that to help people understand what winter average is about.
So getting back to our commercial discussion, what we're recommending is two changes to commercial. One, you take them to a flat rate. Instead of the inclining block sewer rate, you take commercial to a flat rate. They're, they're different, uh, when it comes to sewer. The other thing I want to emphasize to you about sewer is what drives sewer costs? The overall flow does drive sewer costs, that's captured in the flow rate. But the other element that drives sewer costs is the strength of the waste stream. How dirty is the water that is going into the sewer? Ultimately, how bad is the water we're having to treat? And so ideally, when you think about sewer rates, you want to have some kind of structure for those industries and those, you know, those pre-treatment customers that typically produce or discharge sewage that is in excess strength, is greater than the domestic strength. You're not there to, you don't have any of those locals, but that is something to think about long-term. How do you control the, the quality of that waste stream? You don't necessarily want clean water going in, but you don't want harmful substances going down into the sewer system that you're ultimately having.
Mayor and Council, we have asked Chris to create a commercial rate and let you adopt it. A brewery would be one of those commercial customers that would, um, cause, cause some challenges at the plant? Brewery? Yes, ma'am, my southern English, I can't even hear you. B-R-E-W-E-R-Y. And so this will be one of those things that, um, we don't have, but since I've been here, and pray, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we've had three conversations about potential breweries moving to town. What we don't want to have is a situation for somebody to come in and thus not be able to provide water wastewater rates and know what that's going to look like. Currently, we cannot. So we have asked Chris to be proactive. He's got a copy of our permit, and he will build a, um, a rate based on the dirtiness of that water and our permit requirement so that should we have a prospect who come in and it would fall into this category, we now would have an answer to their question, and today we do not.
So there's the commercial flat rate. As we take commercial to a flat rate, we're also recommending that you take commercial off of the winter average. Charge, charge their sewage based on all water use. Uh, it's a, it's a more industry standard practice. It's typically what's done. Commercial is a different type of sewage customer than a residential customer. So that's what we're recommending on the commercial side.
Chris, pardon me if I'm wrong, this is something we actually want to do.
The, the, yes, taking them off winter average to all water use, I believe the intent there was January versus 2019.
Yeah.
Uh, because again, this is extremely unusual to see commercial on.
Okay, so Council, just get us all on the same page. January of 2019 is less than 60 days away. So, um, let's, does anybody have heartburn with doing that? It would be nice to have nods or some sort of a...
And here's what I would say to you, sometime in early 2019 would be great. So if you're not comfortable with January, you would prefer March. I think our, our goal is to not wait till 2020 of January to do that, so...
Yeah, because the point is, you need some feedback now, this is not a later. So, um, Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
I don't think that would make any difference at all.
Councilmember Ennis?
Uh, as far as, we, we don't have a commercial rate right now. What we've done for commercial, the only flat rate you have in your system right now is $3.91. That's what we use to calculate this impact, but we have not established a flat commercial rate that would go into effect in January. All we're talking about doing in January is changing the method of structure. So ultimately, if we, if we change this, what would happen? Instead of a winter average for commercial customers flowing through these blocks, you would bill them for actual usage, and it would flow through these blocks. Yes, sir.
So Councilmember Ennis? Councilmember Rogers?
Commercial accounts do we have? How many people are we, how many businesses are we likely to affect?
I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but it's not many. It's not many. Right.
So, um, it's not, it's not many, and I believe you made the point earlier on, the vast majority of commercial accounts have, if they're irrigating, they have an irrigation meter. So it's already separate. So really what it is, is instead of doing an arbitrary average, and honest to God, if, depending on the commercial business, it could be zero impact if they don't have variation. If they're doing the same thing every day, it, it may not change their bill at all.
No.
Just that, this is, Councilmember Rogers?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if you would know how much some of the business, you know, how much impact...
We, we can run some sample bills based on the data we've got, and ultimately, what we can do is produce a histogram for you, which shows what's going to happen in the majority of the customers.
Yeah, it's all going up like 1%, it's not a deal, but if it's going up 50%, you know, I would just like to do that, but I don't mind if it's early in January, as long as it's not going to be a culture shock.
My suggestion would be that, um, maybe we go for January, they bring us back that data, and then if you're comfortable, fine. Or if you still have questions, then we can put it off of my...
I, I'm going to say we're going to do it February. We're only planning to have one meeting in, in, in December, and we can't get the information by Tuesday.
To make it effective in January.
Bingo.
We cannot have the data by Tuesday.
So, so we're going to bump it to February, and that will give us time to bring this in January and do what we need to do.
So Mayor Pro Tim Nelson, if you were okay with January, I assume you're fine with February?
Yeah, especially if we only talk about the, the process is what, which we're, we're looking at as opposed to really...
Not changing the rate.
Changing rate, right. If it's going to have a significant impact on any of our citizens or customers, then, then, then we can sort of take it into consideration. Right now, we're just talking about process, so I'm good.
Councilmember Ennis, you're okay?
I agree.
Councilmember Rogers? Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, so I think it's fair to say that all of us agree that we're going to take your recommendations for the commercial.
So we talked about commercial. On residential, uh, one thing you do on the sewer side for residential, again, there's the winter average. But you have this interesting bit in your ordinance where you bill residential customers the winter, the, the lower of actual water use or the winter average. So that's, that's the way it reads, the lower of actual water use or winter average. The lower of actual water use or winter average. But the problem with that, when you think about the lower of the water use, when does that typically happen? Typically, that's going to happen in the winter. So, your winter average already takes into account the lowest water use. So, you're going in, you're either charging the average or the lower of, but you are giving them the benefit of the lower of all year because you've already got it in the end. It just doesn't make sense, basically. What we are recommending is that you take out the lower of and simply say, "We're going to charge you the winter average." Right now, you have no customers that would be impacted by it, because they all have the lowest water usage in the summer month when the winter average is a factor. It doesn't impact anybody, but it is more logical. It's a better method. It's, again, it's a common...
Council, I'm thinking nod yes is okay on this one. Everybody, good job.
All right. So, that being said, we did go in and we quantify, that's the last sewer change we did. We did quantify all of these. All of this is just kind of give you an order of magnitude. This is all subject to change. As the projects come in, as we look at different rates, there's different things going forward, the big impacts really do come from the multi-unit change. And then on the commercial side, the only reason you see the flat volumetric rate go to 127 is because we use the rate of $3.91, which is the only flat rate in your system right now. That rate would likely come down because you have more volume that you're bidding. So, again, that's just a, that's a result of the math, if you... So, there are some different, you can't just add this up because there are net impacts here and there, as we talked about with your multifamily earlier. As we change the connections, we have to change how we charge the volumes. That's why you see this cumulative number. If you go in and try and add that up, the math isn't going to work, because that takes all of it into account to get to that cumulative number. Any questions on that? Okay, well, my last topic, I know I'm probably running long here, and I appreciate your patience with me, but I do want to talk about some regional buildings. Every council I'm in front of wants to see this implemented. They always ask, "How do we compare to our neighbors?" And then I always say the same thing, "You can't," because you're not your neighbor. This is not apple-to-apple comparison. Still want to talk about it because it's good information, but you have to take this with a grain of salt. So, good information to have, but you cannot set policies with it. So, what we've done is we've gone in and we've compared, and we've got three different comparisons. We're going to start with size. So, size of city based upon the population. As you look at the city names, you can see what the population is listed there. So, Lago Vista, 6,006.27, down to Sealy at 6,490. The way we've set this chart up, this is for an average customer. We took your total class and divided this, took their total usage divided by the number of customers over the year. So, your average customer right now in residential class has been 6,500 gallons of water, and they put 4,500 gallons of sewage down into the sewer system. And that is your average customer. And so, we've run bills for all of these cities. Right now, your average water customer, their bill's 47.18, their water bill. Their sewer bill's $38, so they're paying on average 85.18 a month. That's what they're paying combined water and sewer. But as you look at the size of the city, you see where you fall. So, again, this is just a size comparison.
I attended the Aqua board meeting on the first Monday of November, and they were having a discussion about what are we using for our planning? And I thought I would share with Council, they use 7,000 gallons for, so it's just the point of it, where for someone who is a neighbor and really is close to us, that's what they use, is 7,000. So, that's a very reasonable number, and that's a checkpoint. Just thought I would share that.
So, that's our first comparison, based on the size of the city. The second comparison, we went and we just looked at a map, tried to find some that were similar and within the same geographical area. And so, again, these cities vary wildly by size. Lago Vista's still on here, which is close in terms of total population, but then we also have Round Rock in here, just from a geographical standpoint. So, but you can see where you fall within the geography standpoint. Again, every city's different. Every city has different ways to fund their utility. They have different ways to get water and treat water and treat sewage. So, the last comparison we put together is we went out and researched cities that produce groundwater, where they get their water, and they have an activated sludge wastewater treatment plant. So, if you look at the type of service being provided, these cities here are similar to you in terms of the type of service being provided. So, it starts with Vernon at the very top, which I'm honestly surprised they're that low, because they've had a number of water issues, so that will likely be going up, all the way down to Andrews there at the bottom. So, again, good information to have, as customers say, you know, "Oh, our service is unaffordable," or, you know, "Somebody so-and-so there pays less." Well, why is that? And as you start to look at this, you're not necessarily out of bounds. Obviously, the range is big, but what you're charging right now is reasonable, both on a population geography and an actual service condition basis.
So, I personally find that it seems to my engineering heart, love, love, love having the data. And you've now showed it to us, so just forewarning that when you bring us rate increases...
We want to see it again.
We want to see it again. I want to see it again, but I think it's...
So, what's important about this slide is our rates are in the middle, but we have not started paying for an activated sludge system. If you will recall, back in March, we had some very preliminary rough estimants, and we told you, you'd be somewhere in the $60 range, which is where Vernon and Granbury are. So, our preliminary estimates were not far off with just some grand-scale numbers. All we had was the end game cost and what it was likely to be. We did not phase in anything. We didn't have four years to start stockpiling the money. So, that was what caused Gary Schiff at that point in time to say, "We better start today raising rates." And that's why you raised your minimum charge $10 this year, because that $60 covers the debt. And so, y'all have...
And that increased rate is what we're looking at.
That's right.
Just want to make that clear for everyone.
That's right. And so, that's kind of the strategy of, when he brings the charts back over the next several years, we're going to start moving closer to the top, closer to the top, closer to the top. And you might also recall that the engineers that developed the plant that we currently have in service commented on the fact that our rate payers have benefited for 30 years by not having to pay for an activated sludge plant. And so, we've got to consistently remind folks that the reason we've had such low rates on the sewer side, because that is a very expensive proposition, is we've paid a dollar for the plant, and what they've paid for to this point has been the maintenance of that plant. So, I just want to, while we're in this moment looking at that, that we will be moving up that scale over the next four years, and that that number is typical of what we represented to you in March was likely to where we would end up.
So, my question to you is, do you think that the people that have the lower rate for those sludge systems are because their systems were older?
I think they're older, they probably had deferred maintenance on them, and they just can't fill them, that's what they've got to store. I would imagine any of those bottom four, you're going to see them pop up. As we talked about, as you move up the chart, you're going to see some of those others move up the chart. And it's not unusual to see this. I worked with a small city, had less than 1,000 connected units. They had to go out and issue $13 million debt to rebuild their wastewater treatment plant and connect to a surface water system. Their rates went up, I believe it was over 80% in, I think we did it in about a three-year timeframe. Since that time, since 2012, they have not had to increase rates because they've been living off growth. That's all it took was to get their infrastructure in place, get what they needed, and they have been growing tremendously, and they've lived off that growth. And over time, they held their rate conscious, because they're coming down in comparison while others are going up. So, it's all a matter of kind of where you are in that timeframe, where you are in that infrastructure cycle, if you will. Yes, you will move up, but if you do move up, everybody else on the chart also will shift. I would be shocked if these two others move up as well.
Okay, I'm a little bit confused because you're saying the activated sludge, which would be the wastewater rate, and the $60, isn't that the water rate for Vernon?
The $60 is the, yes, that is their water rate. Again, if you look at this, you don't know if they're paying for water with water and sewer with sewer.
So, that's why you put them together and look at the total?
Why you've got to look at it. At the same time, they're...
I just saw the 60, and I was like, "But the $60 is not wastewater, and we're talking about our 38 needing to be 60." That would be absolutely number one on the chart, the way that the rates are set up. But I understand, at the end of the day, even though it's two utilities, we own both businesses, and there's some art to what you charge.
So, I am delighted you asked that question, because this is a very important point to talk about. The reason these philosophies are so important is I'd be willing to bet that most of these cities wastewater CCN marry their, mirror their water CCN. And so, when they do, you have the luxury of shifting the cost of service between the two rates. We don't have that luxury. Our wastewater CCN is three times the size of our water CCN, and because of the way an enterprise is structured, enterprise fund is required to be structured from governmental accounting standpoint, our wastewater rates have to be paid by our wastewater customers. Our water rates need to be paid by our water customers. And in not all instances will they be taxpayers, because some municipalities that have the same water and wastewater CCN will subsidize their infrastructure with general obligation, tax-supported debt. And part of the journey that we're taking is we have to keep them separate, because nothing about what we're doing is simple or consistent. So, we really are going to have two separate utilities that have to be funded and paid for in totality of their operations. Yes, ma'am. And that's what makes these numbers confusing, and Chris will tell you, we had multiple conversations about this before they, these showed up, because there's so many nuances that we could have put something out here and it stolen the show. And you don't know everybody's story. So, we just have to remember that, given the size of our CCN and our non-residents and residents, that we just have to be true to an enterprise fund principle and set them up for themselves to pay for themselves.
And that's to be legal.
Well, it's not that it's not illegal, but from an accounting standpoint, you stand to eventually get yourself written up in an audit if you have credit problems somewhere else and your market comes back with bond coverage. It just gets complicated on the debt side. We hadn't gotten there yet.
Given all of that, we should not be surprised that when you bring the chart back to us that of our total, regardless of where we fall, our green is likely to be more than our blue. That's the bottom-line takeaway that I'm...
And honestly, if everybody's price is right, you're going to see these green bars increase dramatically. We've seen new regulations. We've seen stricter enforcement from the EPA. We have seen so much change in the sewer business that these are unrealistic numbers at this stage. As people come in and they start renewing their permits, as they start rebuilding their plants, you're never going to see sewer rates this low ever. Again, this is unrealistic. This is not what it's... So, absolutely, you need to be prepared for that green bar to outpace the blue bar. At the same time, water and sewer, if it's not already as expensive as electricity, it may be more expensive than electricity, because we have deferred maintenance just as an industry for so long. And as we get caught up, you're going to see those prices come up. When you look at the indices comparing electric prices to water and sewer prices, water and sewer right now is going up exponentially compared to electricity. That's going to continue as we go in and repair our infrastructure.
Which, just by definition, and this is super obvious, but a reason why we, as a municipality, should be doing what we can to promote conservation of both water and what we are putting into the sewer system. And as the community understands that they'll pay for it, well, look in the mirror, because that's who's going to end up picking up the bill for all of it.
And so, my city manager hat just comes out. I am all for conservation, but we got to pay for our stuff. So, until we do flush them toilets and run that water.
Well, and every single person that's in a household, they're that household city manager, and by definition, they're going to do what they need to, to try to make their budget as well. So, we just, at the end of the day, it's important to make really good decisions that we, that's why we're going to have all our water wells in the concentrated area. That's why we're going to, we're doing as many things as we can to make the system work efficiently to try to drive those costs down.
All right. And with that, that is all I have. Are there any other questions? Oh, pass forward, again, to consider implementing, we've already talked about that, but are there any other questions?
Council, do you have any questions for Chris? I think you did a fantastic job of explaining some really complicated things. So, Councilmember Jones?
I just, I think that, for me, everything that you recommended that we do going forward, I agree with it, and other than just the one point that I made, you know, about just paying as you go, but, you know, that's a decision that we can win this year.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
You know, again, I reiterate, I appreciate what you've done. I think one of the things that we're doing, we're realizing the cost of kicking the can down the road. One, two, is that we have placed our staff in a position of averting disaster rather than providing typical operations remaining. And this goes a long way toward achieving some sort of equalness, equity in what we're doing out there for a thinking.
Councilmember Rogers, Councilmember Ennis, any further comments? Councilmember Rogers? My last comment, and you said staff, and that reminded me. The employees that we have that work in our utility department, given everything that you've showed us with six blocks of this and five blocks of that, and lower than a this and look, they do a phenomenal, phenomenal job. And I have always admired them and always appreciated all of their hard work, but this makes me want to just go give them all a hug tomorrow, because they, because some of the maddest people in the community, they get a water bill that they don't understand. You know, they deal with a lot, and so, I'm encouraged that I believe this council is supportive of taking actions to make their job a little bit easier, which I know will help our finance department as well. And I just really want to thank them for the, what a mess to navigate, and for our citizens as well. Councilmember Jones?
So, my question is, would it be reasonable for us, even though we might not want to start implementing the rating procedures until 2020, would it be reasonable for us to implement the policies to specify where we are as far as, you know, having three rate blocks instead of five or six?
The goal was to get some to direction this evening. We will bring you an ordinance to change these with different effective dates. The commercial winter average would be affected February 2019. We will ask you to set policy well in advance of January 2020, because he needs to have a model, so that we can come back in April and talk to you about rates, and then that will help us with the messaging that occurs between the recommendations that we talk about in April and the implementation. So, yeah, she will be approving these most likely in your January agenda process. And that allows us to know that these are indeed policies, and then some additional decisions that we need to start making are made, knowing this is where we're going to end up.
So, to your point of the removing the lower of the two winter, the things that are, that would clean up and just make life easier for them, for everybody, let's do those... that would clean up and just make life easier for them, for everybody, let's do those things in a timely manner. I believe that's your suggestion. And if it's reducing the number of blocks, let's do that as soon as, whatever makes sense, but we want to help everybody as soon as we can. Okay, so, I have 804. Round of applause for our consultant. I have a motion to adjourn. Second, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much, staff. Thank you for sitting in.